To the November 28, 2022 meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, would you please join me in reciting the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm Barb Lewis, President. To my right is our Vice President Jeff Benton. To my left, fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill, our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Dawn Houston, our Clerks Sarah De novo and Jennifer Wallwaven. We can begin.
Resolution number 22-1026, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held November 21, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-1026, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today, but we are going to move one of our Commissioner comments to the front right now.
All right, and I would like Commissioner Merrill to begin, please.
I had the privilege, and I think the honor, of being part of the Hunger Games last week. That the, and I was gonna read off the names of participants, but then I sent a note to Karen Watkins. I said, Karen, it makes more sense for you to come up here and do this today. But I was so impressed with the number of people in our county that stepped up to help out. And they were lined up on 521, almost back to 36, 37 at one point, because I got stuck in line trying to get there. And with Karen, I'm gonna turn it over to you, but I just want to say thank you to everybody who's involved. I see a number of faces in the audience here that were involved, and thank you to each and every one of you. Karen, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Karen Watkins, Fiscal Coordinator for the Juvenile Probate Court. Normally, I come here with just like chicken scratch on some paper, but this was, this is such an important item, an event for us, that it's all written down.
And on the screen is the participants.
Yes, these are all of our helpers that help load cars. We have a couple number of new turkey throwers, as we call them, this year. And again, my hope is to share this event with as many people as possible. So thank you for this opportunity to come and not only speak to you about the Fight Against Hunger Games event, but also to thank all those that made it possible. This event started in 2015 alongside the Hayes High School food drive. They have something called House Games over there. And this competition was an excellent way to help get some of the more expensive items for a holiday meal to a family in need, and perhaps also include some side dishes. And that first year, it resulted in 50 turkeys and a mountain of ramen. And we had a lot of ideas as to how we could make it better the next year. And let's be honest, if you give a fiscal manager a problem in a spreadsheet and free rein in the county, well, last week happened. On Monday, 150 complete meals went to schools, local pantries, and local agencies. In addition to that, 45 packed meal boxes with a $15 gift card went to the Buckeye Valley Pantry to assist their kids, along with enough side dishes for 55 to 100 families. We had posted that our meal giveaway would start at 2:00 p.m. and run until 6:00. And on Tuesday morning, we hauled out 300 blue bags that included the meals, as well as their matching turkeys, pantry bags, and perishables. And I witnessed live action, the phrase "many hands make light work." It took us two weeks to compile those meals and less than an hour to put them all out on the side of the building. As I said, this handout was supposed to start at 2:00, and we had our first car show up at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Oh.
I mean, that's, that's the need. And the second car showed up at 10:30. And by 1:45, the cars looped the multiple parking lots of Bixby and had backed up down 521, down to 36, 37. To give you an idea as to what all went out into the community, a meal kit included a turkey, a roasting pan, mashed potatoes, gravy, stuffing, 12 cans of vegetables, Jiffy mix, three pounds of apples, macaroni and cheese rolls, cake mix frosting, and a brownie mix. That was just in the meal kit. In addition to that, a pantry bag was provided. And that included two boxes of cereal, canned chicken, pasta sides, peanut butter jelly, tomato sauce, a pound of butter, a dozen eggs, and a pound of cheese. We realized a couple of years ago that if we are handing out a meal for a family to use on Thursday, but we're handing that meal out on Tuesday, what are you eating on Tuesday? So again, we're not providing just a single meal for a family, but perhaps a week's worth of supplies. And all of those items I just listed were all donated or financially contributed towards by so many in our community. And I thank you for the opportunity to acknowledge them. But a simple thank you is not enough, so I'd like to give you a little bit more from behind the scenes. Promise I'm not gonna cry. Each year when we start organizing the Fight Against Hunger Games, few things are certain. We never know how many meals are needed, or what groups will be able to participate and to what extent, or how the event will turn out. Will we have enough turkeys, or will we need to find recipients for leftover turkeys? That's always a struggle. The goal is to always end the year with "all the turkeys have gone out. I don't have to find new homes for turkeys on Wednesday." That's always the goal. We always hope for the best and stick with the things that we do know. I know that our partners will always show up in bigger and better ways, and I always know that the heart of our community will come pouring out. And I always know that I will end each year with new friends, new ideas, and high hopes for the next year. As with every year, 2022 came with its own set of challenges. The freezer and staging area, which we've been using for the last two years, was under major construction, and we wouldn't have it available to us. Fortunately, Facilities Director John Melvin and Gilbane Construction Foreman Todd Clevenger showed up and said that not only could we work from Bixby this year, but the largest conference room for the county would offer a permanent home for our event. Mr. Clevenger also expressed interest in getting his crews and subcontractors and companies to help out with our food drive. They came through for us in so many ways. Let's see, Todd. Todd is actually three, uh, three in. He's right next to Judge. He's actually in between Judge and Commissioner Merrill. They came through for us with a donation of 50 turkeys, $250 donation from their demo contractor, bags of donated foods were brought from their individual crew, and just the general kindness of all of their crew. They were always stopping in and asking, "How can we help?" And on Tuesday, they were extraordinarily helpful in directing traffic and keeping everyone safe and the line managed. We had three vehicles actually break down in line, and their crew jumped in, got the vehicles running, got the meals packed back into the, into the vehicles, and got the families on their way. So I cannot begin to thank them enough for their help. They're so appreciated, and I hope to have them as a partner again next year. The next challenge was whether or not our past school partners could participate, and at what level. Could we recruit new partners? With 2022 being so much more expensive for all of us, if we invite a school to participate and have their kids buy an item that costs a dollar this year, but only costs 75 cents last year, there are gonna be fewer families that are able to participate because they simply don't have that extra dollar in their own household budget. Despite this concern, we shouldn't be surprised that each of the Delaware City Schools jumped at the opportunity to participate. And while many set their goals lower, each wanted to participate. And I look at the kindness and can-do attitude and loving heart of their Superintendent Kegley. DCS is always so quick to help in any way that they can. We also found old friends in new places. Buckeye Valley Superintendent Kraft was no stranger to our Hunger Games chaos, having been one of the founding members of the Delaware City Schools. But now at Buckeye Valley, they took up our challenge head-on, and each BV school participated in a huge way, allowing us to make each meal and pantry bag better than the last year. I hope they enjoyed their first Hunger Games, and I hope they participate with the fervor as they did this last year. We also had three Olentangie High Schools participate, Original, Orange, and Liberty. They were instrumental in making those pantry bags so meaningful, as Original and Orange collected canned chicken, and that's one of the more expensive items in our pantry bag. And Liberty High School ran a donation drive, which ended in their student council going down to their local Kroger and asking, "How many boxes of cereal can I get for $2,000?" I know the answer to that now. It is a quite literal wall of cereal. It was two pallets full, which meant that each pantry bag got two boxes of cereal, and several of our local pantries now have cereal in stock for the next coming months. Cereal is a really great pantry item because children can create a snack or a meal on their own without help. Owo also contributed with additional cereal through their community outreach program run by Sally Lieber. And a special note to DACC, their donations provided a jar of peanut butter and jelly into each pantry bag. And there is a hype video out there of peanut butter and jelly time, so if you can find it, share it, enjoy it. I find this event to be so special. While I enjoy all aspects of it, my favorite is sharing it with others. And I believe sharing this event, not just the collection with the youth, will drive this event further than we've ever imagined and instill a sense of community outreach. Susie Backus and I are already in discussions as to how to share this event with kids outside of the food drives. And while still tired, I look forward to what the kids will accomplish next year and the years to come. A note on our community partners. In 2019, we realized that the Juvenile Probate Court and the Hayes High School, we couldn't support this on our own anymore. We needed to start bringing in new friends. So Judge Himansky allowed me to reach out to the county offices that we directly deal with and ask if they wanted to participate. And that first year was such a tremendous success. I know that Clerk Rabel and Recorder Jordan were all out there. And it was, they were so eager to participate. And now every year that I call and I ask, in about August, "Hey, do you want to do this?", they're there immediately. So in our first year, we had the Board of DD, the auditors, the prosecutors, clerk of courts, recorders, general and domestic relation divisions, regional sewer, they made a turrut out of stuffing in 2019. And then your offices, well, commissioners. The continued support from these offices, it's integral to the event's success because I know that I can count on them, and I know that they're gonna be there for me. This year, we had some new county partners. Despite a very busy midterm election, the Board of Elections teamed up with the Records Department. The Health District contributed mashed potatoes. Previously, they had been running a COVID and flu clinic during the event. CSEA helped out with their oatmeal collection. Clerk De novo's team was our first city agency participant and came through with 13 turkeys and 250 boxes of oatmeal. The Engineers Office and Sheriff's Office helped out again with canned chicken. And the Guardianship Service Board, an office of one, made a generous gravy donation that helps. Lastly, Powell PD and their pasta side donations coordinated by our soon-to-be Fiscal Director Jason Navi. And I look forward to working with all of those agencies next year. Every year, we continue to expand this event and engage our new community partners, and it's difficult to sustain an event of this magnitude and also hope for growth each year in both quality and quantity. This year, we found new friends in the Delaware County Board of Realtors, the New Beginnings Church, Kilborn Church, the Delaware Citizen Police Academy, and Schwabel's Bread Outlet in Mansfield. Also, Performance Toyota Direct here in Delaware not only showed up with a $500 donation to our event, but they quite literally came by the carloads to drop off enough foods for 100 complete meals. Special shout-out to one of our home bakers, Coco and Flower. She donated all of her proceeds from a $200, $200 from a Halloween cookie sale to our event. Never mind she had just returned from maternity leave. Also, some of our repeat partners, Hat Creek Designs, Eastern Star, IKEA, they're the ones who donated all of those blue bags to us. Andrew's House and the Eagles, they all remain there to make this possible. And the Eagles, in recognition of the high need that Delaware County is facing this year, generously quadrupled their previous donation to $2,000. Lastly, a thank you to my colleagues at Juvenile Probate Court. They put up with a lot from me. But in October, November, I start to get a little weird.
They're not, they're not into that.
I know. Because all my math relates to turkeys. How many mashed potato boxes can I get? And then the random emails exclaiming midweek, "I need 363 boxes of Jiffy", and they show up. They show up every single time, and they're so supportive of me and this event. And in addition to this, you know, my random Jiffy emails, which happened this year, this year, they assembled a resource packet for each bag, and it included resources that are available to our community. So it was the Justice Bus. It was the Delaware Transit Authority. It was our own assessment center that we can get those resources into the hands of those in need. Back to Tuesday, all of our meals were gone in an hour and a half. But in true grit form, our Fiscal Specialist Jess Berry and two wonderful teenagers, one that I know personally, Conrad Watkins and his best friend Grafton, ran inside and start putting together additional pantry sides, while Katie Stenman raced to Meyer to buy gift cards to include. And with these boxes, we were able to provide some food to an additional 50 or so families. They were not complete meals. I mean, it was canned vegetables and stuffing, but it was more than what they had pulled into the parking lot with. In all, in some way, with your help, we impacted 600 families. Judge Himansky texted over the holiday with its own turkey math and estimated that with the county's contributions, potentially 2,500 to 5,000 people were assisted this last week. And while this was an amazing success, and I'm thankful that the food was provided to all those families, I worry about the 20 cars that I had to turn away at 5:00 and the uncounted cars that showed up to an empty locked parking lot. Those cars are the reason that this event means so much to me. I don't ever want to have to turn someone away. And I would rather spend Tuesday night hauling turkeys back into a freezer than deny a family. And while this does not detract from all the good we did, it rather poses a question of what can we do better? I appreciate your time in letting me share this event with you. And I hope that the message of this event reaches further next year and the years following. Thank you.
May I make a comment?
I guess you can tell. You think she's passionate about this? Could anybody stand up that was involved in the event? And you saw the photo of all the other people that were involved, and I want to tell a little story. It took about 10 minutes to take that photograph. We kept waiting for Karen to get over there because she's over there trying to, we're running out of food, and she's trying to make it work, and we had to wait on Karen. And Judge Hayes went over to get her, Judge Himansky, and he was gone. So it took about 10 minutes, that photo you saw on the screen. Am I right? And we, but finally, we got everybody together and got the photo. I cannot say how proud I am of everybody that was involved. You guys were great, every one of you. And Julie's back there in the corner. She had this little turkey. It looked like, it looked like the size of a chicken. And she was trying to find somebody that didn't have kids or a small family that she could give that turkey to, so it'd be big enough for them and not too small. And all those little stories. There was a story in the morning that I heard when I got there. I was a little late because of the darn line. And I think somebody walked there.
We had, we had our first walk.
And somebody, I'm not sure who it was, took that person home.
Katie drove home.
So all those little stories is what makes this so great. You were tearing up, and you were tearing up, and I'm tearing up, and I'm now tearing up. And it was, I cannot say how proud I am of everybody who's involved and how, we should be very proud we're in Delaware County. So, and Gilbane was fantastic. They directed traffic. When we got close, we knew we were gonna run out. I did a count and walked up there and asked them to let us know when we thought we were gonna run out, and they, they did it. They came back and gave us a heads up, and they were fantastic. Everybody involved was fantastic. That's all I have.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. And I, oh, my gosh. It's just, you helped so many. More, more, so many more than ever before. Oh, gosh. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it shows that obviously we have just an outstanding team that really care and really want to help people. But it shows even as well as Delaware County is doing, there is need.
That's, that's right.
You know, and it's just wonderful that everybody pulled together to, to address at least a portion of that need and really help some people out when they need it. So thank you all.
Karen, you spoke more today than you all the time you've been in this room.
We can proceed.
Item number three, resolution number 22-1027, in the matter of approving portion orders, then announce certificates and payment support in batch number CM APR 1123.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-1027, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number 22-1028, in the matter of approving travel expense request.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-1028, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number 22-1029, in the matter of accepting the Treasurer's Report for the month of October 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 22-1029, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number 22-1030, in the matter of approving a proclamation recognizing November as DECA Month in Delaware County.
So moved.
Second.
And under discussion, I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then we can vote on it, but I want to hear from, from all, all the members. Whereas, distributive education clubs are recognized as a program that prepares high school and university students around the world for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Whereas, this nonprofit organization now known as DECA integrates classroom instruction and applied learning opportunities by connecting students to businesses in their communities. Whereas, more than 177,000 DECA students in all 50 U.S. states, Puerto Rico, Guam, and six other countries contribute to their communities through service projects. Whereas, November is recognized internationally as DECA Month. Therefore, be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners is, I'm gonna say, very proud to honor this excellent organization and the valuable role it plays in encouraging career and economic development for our coun, for our county by recognizing November as DECA Month in Delaware County. And we'll take a vote.
Vote on motion 22-1030, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
And welcome, Sierra Toot.
Thank you.
And Jessica Mallett, Erica Brown, and their advisor, Mrs. Teresa Gallenbeck.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. My name is Sierra Toot. I'm a junior at Olentangie Orange, and I'm a part of our DECA chapter. With me is Jessica Mallett, Erica Brown, who are also chapter members, and our amazing advisor, Mrs. Gallenbeck. And we sincerely thank you for recognizing November as DECA Month.
What are some of the, what have you learned through DECA, I guess?
So DECA has, so we're starting our competition season. So this was our chapter campaign to help raise recognition for our chapter. And then after this, we're gonna go to regionals, where there's written events and individual and team competition events. And it helps with our leadership skills, our business knowledge, and really gives us real-world experience.
Boy, that's great. Anyone else like to speak?
I just think it's, this is my first year, and this is our teacher.
Sure, just come up a little closer, say, thank you.
Yeah, so it moved positions this year, so it's our teacher's first year. And I think it's just, I'm a senior, so it's given me like a lot of opportunity to find my pathway and like what I want to do with business in the future. It's helped me make connections, and I'm just really excited to see what the rest of the year holds for us because I know it's gonna be really good, so.
Oh, thank you.
This is exciting. Thank you.
I agree with what Jess said. I feel like, also as a senior, I feel like it's helping me to move into the business world as an entrepreneur and to develop my own business skills and to hopefully flourish in my career in the future. And I'm also excited because our goal as an entire chapter is to all go to nationals in April in Orlando and to have everybody succeed in their events and make sure that they get the most out of DECA.
What are, what are some of the events then in the competition that you think you'll find?
A lot will be in the entrepreneurship field, as, as well as hospitality and management. And then a lot of the men in our chapter, DECA chapter, are doing sports management and promotional marketing as well.
Do you have like one project that all three of you work on?
Yeah, so this is our chapter campaign, where any chapter can do this across the nation, but it's to raise recognition for our chapter. So through this, this is one of the parts to get our chapter campaign. And we did a service project, and we also reached out to prominent community members who came and spoke to us.
Oh, great. Any questions, Commissioners?
Are there chapters in other schools then, too?
Yeah, so a chapter is junior and senior marketing students. And I think all the Olentangie schools have them. I assume Hayes has a chapter.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say how proud I am that this is my 20th year teaching, but this is my first year as a DECA advisor, so it's been new to me and these girls and all our members. We have about 35 this year between the junior, senior class. They're just really impressive. I, I learn from them every day. I'm acting more as like a facilitator really than a teacher. I know the business content, but you know, the DECA portion is new. Running our school store has been new, and so all the kids, but especially these three, have just been a huge help. So it's, it's great to see these young leaders blossoming, and so we thank you today for recognizing them and thanks to all the parents and community members that have been a part of raising these girls, so thank you.
I was gonna say, we can't go through the whole celebration without recognizing that we do have a familiar of relationship here. Would you care to comment on that, Sierra?
My mom is awesome. She has raised.
It's Christmas time.
She's an amazing role model. I hope to grow up to be just like her, very hardworking. Has raised me to be independent, and I'm very proud to call her my mom.
Oh, that's very nice.
And you read that really well.
Stacy wrote it for you.
I just want to say congratulations, great job, and your leadership, and you all will be better young ladies as you grow up because of your time involved in this organization, so well done. And, and I agree with your assessment, for going to your mom.
Thank you.
Before, I mean, when, when students leave high school and then everybody says, "Well, what do you want to do when you go to college? What are you gonna study when you go to college?" But this gives you such an advantage. You, you've really thought about it, and not only thought about it, but participated in something that, that you could be doing years after college. So I mean, what a, what a great learning tool, but I bet it's fun, too.
It is very fun, yes.
And rewarding. And we do have.
Photos.
The proclamation.
Yep.
And a photo. With. Also, yeah. Yes, and you are. And one more. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution number 22-1031, in the matter of accepting a donation made to the Department of Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Watson-Shea, the Business Administrator with Job and Family Services. I just wanted to express our gratitude for all of these donations. This, all of these boxes went to our foster families and our kinship care providers. It helps to make sure that all the, the youth that are in our care or in the care of a family member are, you know, taken care of through the, through the holidays. So we, we really appreciate these donations.
All right. Any questions, comments, vote, please?
Vote on motion 22-1031, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 22-1032, in the matter of reappointing members to the Berkshire Landing New Community Authority Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you two members who are interested in being reappointed, and we encourage you to approve them, Pat Blaney and Rob Riley.
I'd just like to say, Patrick Blaney, we see his name on so many things. He's so willing to be involved and do whatever he has to in this county. And Rob, I don't want to leave you out either.
Yeah, yeah, Pat's amazing. He does, serves on so many boards and helps in so many ways.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Vote on motion 22-1032, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number 22-1033, in the matter of appointing a member to the Delaware County Board of Zoning Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And with this one, we have a new appointment, Lauren Wheeler, for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We were hoping to also be able to appoint her to the Rural Zoning Commission, but unfortunately found that there is a conflict, a potential conflict of interest between the work of those two boards. So we could not. So we still do have an opening. So we could not, so we still do have an opening with the Rural Zoning Commission. So if you know anyone who lives in the Marlboro, Radnor, or Thompson Townships, who is, has a burning desire to get involved with zoning issues, please. We, we've left the application portal open, so.
Okay, is this a time-consuming thing to be in the rural?
No, I mean, the Board of Zoning Appeals meets as needed if there's some issue that comes up. The commission, the zoning commission next year does have work to do with rewriting some zoning codes. So they will be meeting a little bit more and we're working to try to find somebody for that spot.
Do we have a posting online to?
Yeah, we do, yeah. So if you just go to our website and click on the Boards and Commissions button, it'll take you to the page where they could find that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So we recommend approval of Lauren though for the BCA.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero three-three, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero three-four, in the matter of approving a transfer of appropriations for employee safety.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, commissioners, Dawn Houston, Deputy Administrator. And we're recommending the transfer of appropriations from the safety budget, the fifty-three-hundred object code to the fifty-two-hundred object code in order to purchase AEDs for areas that are needed to be replaced.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero three-four, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero three-five, in the matter of declaring county personal property obsolete, unfit, or not needed for public use.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, commissioners, I'm Eric Burgess, Assistant Chief of EMS, and with me is Lieutenant Jessica Picari. Uh, this resolution is just to declare some medical supplies that we have as no longer of, of use to, to the EMS department. Uh, they're expired medical supplies, still in the package that we're just not able to use anymore. Um, Lieutenant Picari is very active in community service projects within the county and she has worked with the Humane Society to find a, a use for those expired supplies, so they're, they're able to use those supplies, so.
Oh, that's great.
Good.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero three-five, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye, I was expecting to see Eric today, but tomorrow's his birthday, happy birthday.
Thank you.
He's so glad you remembered to say it in session.
Thank you.
Take care.
Happy birthday, Eric.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero three-six, in the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation for the Public Defender's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Good morning. Welcome, Carlos.
This resolution is for you to move fifty thousand, or actually for supplemental appropriation. I was here a little over a month ago and I moved money from compensation to fifty-three-oh-one. That was not enough to cover the contracted professional services for the remainder of the year. Uh, so we are seeking a fifty-thousand dollar appropriation. Currently, that object line is in the red, about sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, we do believe that fifty thousand dollars would take us to the end of the year. We expect around twenty-five thousand dollars in attorney billing, private counsel point at attorney billing for the remainder of the year. Uh, any bill that we receive after December tenth will be paid in twenty-twenty-three. So we do believe that this is sufficient to take us through the end of the year.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero three-six, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank Carlos.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero three-seven, in the matter of accepting the roads, approving recommended speed limits, establishing stop conditions, and releasing the bond for Glenmead Section Two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. Uh, we have several roads in Glenmead Section Two. This is located in Berlin Township near the Berlin High School, uh, just under, uh, just under a mile of new roads that have been through the one-year developer maintenance period and now are ready to go on the public system.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero three-seven, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero three-eight, in the matter of approving developers' agreement for Hyatt Meadows Section One and Two, Hyatt's Road.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, this is an owner's agreement for the Hyatt Meadows located on the north side of Hyatt's Road. Uh, in lieu of building a right-turn lane into that development, the developer has agreed to make cash contribution instead of that, uh, which will roll into a future improvement on Hyatt's Road.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero three-eight, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero three-nine, in the matter of approving an easement to Delco Water Company Incorporated for future home road construction in Orange Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, you're aware of the home road extension over the railroad tracks. Uh, Delco Water will be, uh, does need, does need to run some water lines along the new stretch of home road. And so they've asked for easements through the county-owned, currently county-owned property. Uh, it's the former Zarbaugh Track that abuts Lewis Center Road, and so that's what, uh, that's what this resolution does.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash ten-three-nine, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero four-zero, in the matter of approving a right-of-way acquisition service agreement with Dunn, Robin, and Associates LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, we're asking for your approval, uh, on this contract. Uh, Dunn, Robin, we've worked with several times before. Uh, we'd like for them to assist us with some right-of-way appraisals and acquisition services on a project we have uh, on Hyatt's Road between, uh, Pyatt Road and South Old State Road, uh, which we will widen that section to three lanes, uh, but we will need some additional right-of-way, uh, excuse me, Hyatt's Road. I was thinking of Cheshire Road. Uh, this is between Sawmill Parkway, uh, west towards Stites Road, excuse me. Uh, we will need some additional right-of-way, uh, to build that section, and so, uh, Dunn, Robin can help us, uh, secure that.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero four-zero, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero four-one, in the matter of establishing a new fund and organization key and approving in advance of funds in a supplemental appropriation for improvements related to Berlin Farm.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, you'll recall that, uh, several weeks ago, your board approved a special assessment on some new, uh, single-family residential lots, uh, as agreed by MI Homes. Uh, this basically establishes the fund where those, uh, those deposits will be made to and then the expenses will come out of this fund, uh, for, for accounting purposes.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero four-one, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero four-two, in the matter of establishing an organizational key for Old Sawmill and Presidential Parkway, PID number one-one-one-eight-zero-six, project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, I believe you're aware, we are working with Liberty Township and the City of Powell uh, to upgrade the intersection of Old Sawmill Road and Presidential Parkway. Uh, ODOT is providing, uh, federal safety funding towards that project. And so we need to establish a new, uh, organizational key to account for those funds. ODOT prefers that the county be the local pub, local public agency in charge of the project, uh, for their, uh, basically for their purposes. And so, um, that's essentially what this does, is it will be a, it will show up as, as a county grant and then, um, it doesn't really change where the funding will come from. The township and the city will be still splitting the local share.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero four-two, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero four-three, in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We just have four, uh, routine utility installation permits recommending approval.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero four-three, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero four-four, in the matter of approving a notice of exercise of sixth extended term to the lease agreement via and between Teller Square North Point LLC and the Board of Commissioners Delaware County, Ohio for the Clerk of Courts Title Office at North Plate Plaza Shopping Center.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Natalie Fravel, Delaware County Clerk of Courts. I'm here this morning requesting a sixth renewal to the lease agreement for my satellite title office. It's located on Route twenty-three in Lewis Center. Um, this agreement would take us through May of two thousand twenty-eight. Um, as you know, the Lewis Center Title Office has been opened almost twenty years now, uh, this coming May, and has provided a valuable service to the residents in the southern tier of Delaware County, as well as many auto dealers around central Ohio. And do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
No, I, I just, I guess, a compliment, thank you, for, for that office has been phenomenal.
Thank you.
And great location provide, I hear just compliments, you know, consistently about the performance of the, of the office and the staff and, and there's a reason that so many auto dealers in Columbus are driving to Delaware County and that's because of our team there, so, great work.
That's a very good point.
It's not just location, I think it's the quality of the people involved too.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes.
I have a great staff.
Boy, people, people know that too, thank you.
We started with, we started with just three full-time employees twenty years ago and now we have six and a half, so, yeah.
How does that compare with, with, uh, one of your other offices?
It's about three times the business of the Delaware office.
Oh my gosh, okay.
Yeah, it's quite a big difference, yeah.
Boy, well, thank you. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero four-four, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero four-five, in the matter of amending resolution number one-nine dash three-one-six to revise a capital projects fund established in accordance with ORC five-seven-zero-five-point-one-three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, commissioners, Karen First, Fiscal Manager. We are asking for your approval to amend the previous resolution to increase the shall-not-exceed amount from thirty million to thirty-seven million for the four-twenty fund. This fund is used for the larger capital improvement projects for the county. It has been used for the historical courthouse renovations and is currently being used for the Bixby Campus, the Willis Building, and the Fifth District projects. Since the plan is to pay cash for the majority of these projects, we need to increase the amount in order to stay in compliance. We currently have just over twenty-point-five million in this fund, and with the upcoming transfers being requested, we'll have thirty-three-point-three million in the fund. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero four-five, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number two-two dash one zero four-six, in the matter of establishing a new fund and organization key, approving a supplemental appropriation, a transfer of funds, and a decrease in appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Hey, we're asking for your approval on this resolution. We have a new fund and a new org key for the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. And the first supplemental appropriation is for the third quarter casino revenue, since we have received more than we budgeted on the casino revenue. It's about nine-point-six-five percent higher than we collected in twenty-twenty-one. And we are also requesting to transfer another twelve million to the Bixby Campus project. The second group of supplementals are to cover the payroll for the remainder of the year in the Commissioner's office with our, um, personnel changes. And the transfer of funds is to actually transfer the third quarter casino revenue and that cash transfer to Bixby. And the decrease in appropriations are to reduce the current general fund budgets for the EMS and Sheriff's Office, since some of their salary and benefits have been paid with the ARPA funding.
Okay, any questions? Vote please.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero four-six, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye, thank you, Karen.
That brings us to Administrator Report.
Good morning, commissioners, Tracy Davies, County Administrator. First would like to introduce our new Finance Director, Justin Navi, who, if you want to come forward, Justin, he is starting today. He comes to us most recently, um, from Kenyon College, but has spent time with the City of Delaware, the City of Marysville, as well as Franklin County Board of Commissioners, and we are super happy to have Justin on board and wanted to welcome him to the team.
We are, welcome, welcome, Justin.
Thank you, commissioners, uh, great to be here. Um, just a quick background, um, I'm a certified public accountant. I have about nineteen years of experience in, uh, county and city government, uh, primarily working in budgeting and accounting. So, uh, really appreciate this opportunity, um, really looking forward to working with Administrator Davies and the board itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very happy to have you.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, happy to have you on board. We got a whole bunch of financial initiatives that we want to work on and a lot of big projects that need financial expertise and leadership, so very glad to have you on board, thank you.
Thanks, commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I also wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, thank both the Auditor and the Treasurer for lending staff to participate in the hiring process for the Finance Director, it was helpful. Um, a couple other things, we should be wrapping up our budget hearings on Wednesday, so looking forward to that. Wednesday will be a long day, but a good day. And then finally, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank, uh, the commissioners, all three of you. This week marks one year for me here at the county and I'm just super thankful to be here and appreciate you're giving me the opportunity to serve the residents of Delaware County. There's an amazing team here and I'm super grateful to all of, all of the team and all of the help they've given me over the years, so thank you.
Boy, we really thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn is special, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Dawn's nodding, we're all nodding. Very grateful, Administrator Davies.
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Benton.
Uh, let's see, just a couple things. Uh, we had, we, we're not able to have our land bank meeting on Tuesday, or Wednesday, because, um, we had a couple cancellations, uh, late that, uh, didn't, prevented us from having quorum, so we'll, Sarah's working on getting calendar invites out and we'll get a new date set up in the coming weeks, um, but we do need to have a meeting, uh, before the end of December. Um, budget hearings Wednesday, that's it.
Commissioner Merrill.
I have one other thing, um, after the Hunger Games, uh, the Bixby Building was open, so I said, hey, I'm going to take a walk through there. I was extremely impressed with the progress that's been made. I don't know if the two of you have had an opportunity to be out there recently, out in the proximity. Uh, it, it looks a lot different than it did when we, uh, teorized to go around and.
Oh, oh, that's exciting.
So if you had a chance, uh, do you want to take a look at it? They probably would be very proud and someone would be here for you all, right?
That's right, yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, and we do have need for executive session.
We do, resolution number two-two dash one zero four-seven, in the matter of adjourning into executive session for consideration of the purchase of property for public purposes for pending or imminent litigation and to consideration of confidential information related to economic development.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-two dash one zero four-seven. Sorry, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
We are now reassessed into executive session.